I call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, March 6, 2024 to order. At this time, we will have a moment of silence for whatever is on your heart tonight. So now, I would ask for us to stand and join Alderman Jodgin as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Jodgin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Krupp, would you please call the roll?
Ardone.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Reinards.
Here.
Gribb.
McGinnis.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
T. Dunn.
Here.
Jobjin.
Here.
And Burkholder.
Here.
Nine present. Your Honor.
Thank you. Good evening. As we begin this meeting of the Committee of the Whole, I would like to welcome all in attendance and also those reviewing our meeting either on our computer or mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers across the region, as the Committee of the Whole meetings are recorded and available on the city of Davenport website for viewing. We are happy you're participating in city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place to live. For those in attendance and those watching at home, thank you for joining us. At this time, we do ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic handheld devices so they don't interfere with anyone who may be up here speaking. And if you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the agenda, please step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the chair, state your name and order address. Please address the council as a body, not at any individuals. You will have five minutes. And I do ask that everyone observe, and I know you will, the commonly accepted rules of decorum, dignity, courtesy, and good taste. Thank you very much. Ms. Merritt, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing tonight. Madam Protem.
All right. Thank you. And we don't have any public hearings this evening, so we will move now to petitions and communications from council members in this office. Anyone have anything for tonight? The only thing I would mention is that, just a reminder that, I'm sorry, Alderman Kelly, I'll go back to you. Okay? The Easter egg hunt on Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at Vandervier Park. This is our annual Easter egg hunt fund for kids of all ages, so please join us if you can. And now Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just want to say a few really quick things. I want to tell you why Tim Kelly ran for alderman and so why I'm sitting here on this panel. I ran for alderman maybe six years ago and I lost because there were a bunch of people that were scared of me, and I don't know why they were scared of me, didn't know, didn't care. Now I see why. And I ran with the understanding that I was here to help my city. First and foremost, my ward to help my city. So I want to say that, my city, my city, my city. And I didn't write anything down because I think it's crazy when people sit up here and read those Easter speeches, so this is really coming off the top of my head. So I just have a few bullet points that I want to touch that. I ran because I wanted to make a difference. And with that being said, it's funny to me how many people are now being put in the situation that Tim Kelly was put in without an investigation on Tim Kelly. So it's really interesting to me that when you try to make a difference, put baby in the corner. So since baby's not alone in the corner, I welcome this new council. It's kind of interesting. I've still got my eye on everybody, but I just welcome this new council because for years you guys thought I was crazy that I said I'm in the no position, but I don't know nothing. And then it was lovely when somebody wrote an email, we excluded Alderman Kelly. So I could cheer from the rooftops because guess what? That was a proof in the pudding that I didn't know nothing. So with that being said, I want to say that the bullying that I have witnessed to some of these new people holds wigs, holy shh. Because I'm not understanding. I get it when it came to me, but the bullying that I'm seeing on the levels that you guys want us to worry about these employees, what about us elected officials that have to go through this stuff? Do you know my phone rings? I have to turn it off. Why are you calling your alderman at midnight? At midnight, you need to dial 911. Ain't nothing I can do for you at midnight. I'll holler at you tomorrow. So what I'm not understanding is protect, no offense, Peanut Gallery. Protect them, screw us? Are you kidding me? I wouldn't have thrown my life away for me to be put in front of harms way for things that I thought I was doing right. So I just have to say that. I really have to end with that. And on the 28th of this month, it will be the night out with the aldermen. I will be at 1517 Harrison Street in the boutique of 563 Vintage. These young men have just opened up in the Hilltop, so I'm trying to spotlight different businesses in my area. So if you have nothing going on, stop out and support these young men and have a chat with the aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Reinards.
Thank you. I just want to make the announcement that the 8th ward will be having a meeting at the library on March 14, Thursday. So come one, come all. Looking forward to talking and hearing what you have to tell me. So look forward to seeing folks, 6:00 to 7:30.
Seeing no one else, we'll move ahead with our committees. And the first area we have, we have four areas of discussion tonight: community development, public safety, public works, and finance. Our first area for discussion is community development. Alderman Reinards will lead the discussion, and Alderman Ardone will set the agenda. Alderman Reinards, please.
Thank you very much. I've got six items that we're going to address this evening. The first one being the second consideration ordinance for case ORD 24-01, amending chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled zoning by amending table 17-08-1 use matrix to allow bed and breakfast and a reception family as a special use in the CT Commercial Transitional Zoning District. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Anybody from council? Moving on. The second item is second consideration ordinance for case ROW 24-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to vacate a portion of unimproved Marquette Street right-of-way located south of West 76th Street, Ward 8. Anyone from the public wishing to comment?
Gary Ecklin, and I live in Davenport, and I really, I only read what, I don't get the green sheets, and I'm not an online person, and so I wish that the city staff would include a little bit more information on this. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I'm not sure what it's about. It just says, "vacated." And I can't speak in favor or against it since there's no explanation whatsoever in these sheets that the public are. And as I mentioned in one other comment recently, I know from talking to alderpeople over the years that not every alderperson gets an opportunity to read the green sheets from cover to cover. I don't even know if you print them out anymore, if you just go online, but they used to have a big thick stack, and sometimes it'd be two inches thick. And there's lots of detail in there. If you read it from cover to cover, you learn a lot. But some aldermen, not just public people, but some aldermen end up reading these as a source of information, and I wish there was a little bit of information because I don't even know whether I'm opposed to it. I really don't understand what it's about.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council? Okay, moving on. Item three, second consideration ordinance for case REZ 24-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to rezone approximately 31.9 acres of land at 2800 Eastern Avenue from S-1C Institutional Campus District to CT Commercial Transitional District and establish a planned unit development in accordance with the submitted preliminary plat, Ward 5. Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Gary Ecklin. I believe this is Annie Wittenmeyer again, and I apologize for getting up here. I'll be very fast. I believe that the city should still, I really don't even believe it's too late, the city should carve out the theater and at least two cottages for the theater so that the disruption, completely and totally unnecessary disruption to junior theater, completely and totally unnecessary, and I believe it would work even if they carved out two cottages and the theater.
Thank you. Anybody from council? Moving on. Item number four, resolution approving case F23-10, being the request of QuickTrip Corporation for a final plat of Business Commons at Silver Creek, 2nd Edition, a one-lot subdivision on 3.82 acres located south of West 76th Street and west of Northwest Boulevard, Ward 8. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Council? Item number five, resolution approving case F23-15, the request of 227 Leclerc LLC for final plat of Riverwatch Subdivision, a two-lot subdivision on 2.42 acres located at 227 Leclerc Street, 3rd Ward. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Council? And the last item, resolution approving case F23-16, being the request of QuickTrip Corporation for a final plat of Interstate Park, 4th Edition, a one-lot subdivision on 5.02 acres located at 2904 West 76th Street, Ward 2. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Thank you. I wish for Alderman Ardone to set the agenda, please.
Thank you. I will make a motion to place all items on the consent agenda, please.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back to you, Madam.
Thank you very much. Second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Jobjin will lead this discussion, and Alderman T. Dunn will set the agenda. Alderman Jobjin, please.
Thank you. First item under the public safety agenda is a resolution approving street lane and public ground closure requests on a list of dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Corn Belt Running Club, Genesis Sports Medicine, Brady Street Sprint, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Thursday, July 25, 2024. Closure, Brady Street from 5th Street to Palmer Drive. Next, Corn Belt Running Club, Arconic Junior Bix Downtown, 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday, July 26, 2024. Closures, East 4th Street from Pershing Avenue to River Drive, East 3rd Street from Iowa Street to River Drive, and Iowa and Leclerc Street from 3rd Street to 4th Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, motion approving a noise for answer request on a list of dates and times for outdoor events. We have city of Davenport, party in the park, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., Thursday, June 13, 2024, at 2935 West 72nd Street, Waylon Park. Next, Thursday, June 27, 2024, Lindsay Park, 2200 East 11th Street. Thursday, July 18, 2024, Center Brook Park, 4675 Telegraph Road. And Thursday, August 8, 2024, Cork Hill Park, 1100 Farnham Street, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to make comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, just a quick thanks to staff. We know that this always takes a lot of time and energy. These are great events for the community, and we also thank our community partners that participate. Moving on to item number three, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. Have the Lemonade Stand Restaurant, 131 West 2nd Street, 1A, new license, license type, Class C liquor on premises. And then there are those items under section B, the annual license renewals, which I do not read, but they're there for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, I would ask Alderman T. Dunn to please set our agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Jobjin. Make a motion to move all items on public safety to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That ends public safety. Back to you, Madam Protem.
Thank you, Alderman Jobjin and Alderman Dunn. Our third item, area to be discussed is public works. Alderman Ardone will lead this discussion, and Alderman Kelly will set the agenda. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you. Item number one is the third consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 15.44, entitled flood damage prevention of the Davenport Municipal Code, to adopt a new flood insurance study and flood maps and to align the ordinance with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and FEMA standards and regulations. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is the resolution adopting the most recent published editions of the Iowa Statewide Urban Design Standards for Public Improvements, the Iowa Statewide Urban Standards specification and public improvements, and the city of Davenport supplemental specifications for public improvements, and the city of Davenport supplemental specification manual. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Sorry? A very small minor thing that I found after deep search, why people do not want to move to Davenport. Oh, David Anderson, Ward 5, border of Ward 3. I'm calling attention to the sub-page backup material hypertext from the agenda, page 1 of 2 thus, says, "show page." Oh, that's what I'm supposed to do. Not a good day. This is not mentioned in the expanded version under another hypertext of backup material, 7030 3.04 CC, states deleted requirement to stamp driveways and sidewalks with information identifying contractor. So will the date be stamped? I frequently visit new homes and additions ranging over $200,000 in Davenport. I get around a lot. Many sidewalks have needed replaced immediately. I mean, these people bought brand-new, huge, expensive houses and had to replace all the concrete. If it doesn't immediately need it, I've seen cracks, pits, disintegration, unlevel sidewalks. This is scary to me. I, you know, it's an embarrassment to Davenport, and I was just hoping that at least they would stamp their name and date on it because I'm just a small person that doesn't see everything, and I see huge amounts of this myself personally. And like I say, it's buried information, but I dig severely deeply, and I do know how to get almost every single thing. This is one of the largest agendas. I couldn't get it all this week, but I do my due diligence. Thank you for listening. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, before I move to council, we have this city engineer come up and explain what the Sutus Manual and all that is about and why we're making these changes.
Brian Schad, city engineer. Just as a quick overview, this is a statewide standard. I gave a short presentation on it before. A lot of municipalities, DOT, Iowa State, and suppliers all put their information in for this, so there's a good backing on a lot of technical knowledge. This particular item, we actually removed the stamp that typically goes in sidewalks because we have our Cartograph Work Order system and our permits, so we're able to track who put that sidewalk in, and we're actually saving a little bit of money for contractors.
Thank you. Before I move on, anyone from council?
I'm sorry, if.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Sorry. If I could ask, just, I think, to reiterate this, so the stamp's not there because it's now available on Cartograph, so is this easily available information then to a new homeowner? They would be able to call and find out the date of their, or would they go online to do that?
Absolutely. They could work with Public Works. We'd be able to look that up.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. Just for a quick reference, I'm so sorry that you come back up here. Just for some folks that don't know, can you briefly describe or explain what Cartograph is?
Cartograph is our work order management, asset management system. We've been working for several years to put in quite a bit of information. We can track our own workforce, hours, material, et cetera with that. We can track our permits with it, be it building or right-of-way permits. It's really just kind of an all-encompassing data tool for Public Works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting the work completed under FY 2021/2022 Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Program by Langman Construction in the amount of $2,613,640.10. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding contracts for the 2024 sewer lateral repair program totaling $970,000 to six contractors and authorizing the Public Works Director, Assistant City Administrator to increase quantities for each contract within the capital improvement project budget constraints. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
I wasn't looking up, so I'm not sure who's doing this one. Is that you?
Right here.
Okay. And I'll be very brief. And I told myself when I came down here that if I was going to come down here, I was going to get up and address the sewers when they came up, and I'll only address it once. But the sewer bill should really be shifted back into the property tax the way that it used to be because it has an excessively negative effect on poor homeowners and poor minimum wage-type renters. And the city at one point had the garbage and sewer bill included in the property taxes, and then at one point, in order to be able to have more money, an extraordinarily wasteful move in terms of staff and postage and all of that other stuff, the sewer bill should be moved back onto the property tax. That has to do with the sewers, and I'll get down and I'll only comment once tonight on the sewers, but the sewers, if the city council is at all concerned about affordability for minimum wage workers and other people, they'll move this back onto the property taxes the way it used to be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the CY 2024 Sidewalk Program to C2 Creative Concrete in the amount of $186,078.25. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the CY 2024 ADA Rent Program to C2 Creative Concrete in the amount of $156,599. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the West 13th Street, Hillendale Road to Lincoln Avenue Reconstruction Project, the Five Cities Construction, in the amount of $996,022. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding a contract for the Tremont Avenue Reconstruction Project, the area works in the amount of $1,077,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of hot-mix asphalt for the 2024 construction season to Riverstone Group as the primary supplier and Minats and Tickle Asphalt as backup suppliers. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of asphalt oils for the 2024 construction season to Minats and Biometis Materials and Supply Company. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 11 is a resolution approving the purchase of uplifting equipment for eight police department vehicles from Kel-Tec Incorporated in the amount of $191,984.16 using the State of Iowa Department of Administrative Services contract. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Kelly? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And now, Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Thank you, sir. I would like to make a motion to set all 11 items to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That sets the agenda, and back to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly and Alderman Dunn. So our final area to be discussed in finance, and Alderman Newton will lead this discussion, and Alderman Lynch, Alderwoman Lynch will set the agenda. Before I yield the floor to Finance Chair Alderman Newton, I want to remind my colleagues that the first two items on the finance agenda involve municipal employees who have not waived their rights under Iowa Code Section 21.51i. So any discussion or commentary council members may have regarding these two agenda items should only occur during a closed session. For us to engage in discussion of those two items on the floor of a public meeting would violate the employees' rights, and with that, I recognize Alderwoman Newton. Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Alderwoman Lynch and I have five items on the finance agenda for tonight. The first item is a resolution ratifying Executive Order 2322, appointing Mallory Merritt as interim city administrator, ratifying personal memorandum of understanding between the city of Davenport and Mallory Merritt, memorizing Ms. Merritt's appointment as interim city administrator, and approving Amendment 1 to the personal memorandum of understanding between the city of Davenport and Mallory Merritt. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? I would ask that you please come forward, state your name, address, and or ward.
My name is Latrice Lacy, and I live in the 5th Ward. I would like to first co-sign the statement that Alderman Kelly made regarding the disrespect that some of the new council members have experienced. I would also like to point out that the section of the open meetings law that was cited specifically says that council does not have to honor the employees' request to discuss it in closed So this is something that is your right to do, and you can do it in closed session, but if you don't want to, you don't have to. That's what it says in the law. I would like to point out the different treatment that is given to staff seemingly based on race. There are really unending limits that there seem to be to go through to protect staff members who are white from being embarrassed, from having something negative said about them, from being criticized, you're willing to edit footage, you're willing to lie, apparently cheat still, pay people off, God knows what else. Sue Ezra. We don't know what you're willing to do. The way that this has been handled is bonkers to me and probably everybody else in this room. We cannot get staff in our office. We've been asking for years, and we have not been able to get staff. But we can give someone a bonus that will cover two or three staff people, at least part-time people. But we're told every year you don't have funding, but it just means that you don't care about civil rights law enforcement, don't care about civil rights. It's the only department that really has diversity. There is no concern with it. If people are paid $50,000 bonuses with public funds, where is the limit? Where is the end? There is no efforts taken to make sure that these people are performing their duties ethically. There's no efforts taken to make sure that they are not engaging in discrimination, that they are being properly supervised and disciplined. It's just been a free-for-all is what we've seen. They can do whatever they want, and a lot of you probably have no idea what they're doing because they present one thing to you and then they're doing something else behind the scenes. There needs to be some changes in how these things are handled. If somebody can get a $50,000 bonus, then I want one, too.
Amen. If I would ask, let the speaker speak, please.
My name is David Ezra Sidran. I live in the 3rd Ward. On November 8, 2023, the mayor signed this, this executive order appointing Mrs. Merritt as interim city administrator, and with the attached memorandum of understanding included a $50,000 bonus. You've probably heard that the city of Davenport has a weak mayor, strong council form of government. This is true. The mayor can issue executive orders for things like declaring World Diabetes Day and presumably handing out keys to the city. The mayor, however, does not have the power to hire or fire or give out $50,000 bonuses by executive order. If the mayor could rule by executive order, there would be no need for the council at all. The mayor would sit up on the 3rd floor signing executive orders all day, hiring people, firing people, giving bonuses, ordering cheeseburgers, whatever he wanted. It doesn't work like that. The mayor of Davenport is not a dictator. Presumably, outside council told the city that using executive orders to give out bonuses wasn't legal. So the city next tried to hide these bonuses with closed sessions. According to the Iowa Attorney General... According to the Iowa Attorney General, there are four reasons, and all four must be present, for the city council to meet in closed session. Apparently, these secret closed sessions didn't meet any of the requirements. Again, presumably outside council told the city that they were doing wasn't legal. So now we're at the city's third attempt to hand out $50,000 bonuses. This is the resolution that is before you now. I would remind the council that the Iowa State Auditor announced that it was performing, quote, "a review of millions of dollars in settlements Davenport recently made with public employees," close quote, and that, quote, "the probe has to do with payouts that totaled $2 million to city administrator Cory Spiegel and two administrative assistants." "The deals were made in secret and disclosed only after they had been signed," close quote. Presumably, Mrs. Merritt, as the city's chief financial officer, was involved with these payouts. Presumably, the city's chief financial officer is cooperating with the state auditor's investigation. I respectfully submit that until the state auditor submits his final report, that no more outrageous bonuses and payouts be approved for city employees. I strongly urge the city council to vote down this absurd giveaway of more city funds. I remind the council that Davenport has a weak mayor, strong council form of government, and it's time for the council to be strong. Show some backbone. Do the right thing and vote this giveaway down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please state your name, address, or ward.
Judith Lee, second ward. Here we go again. I believe the same violation of open meeting laws and misuse of executive sessions in violation of state law to keep agreements and decisions out of full council and public view. I believe that there is mayoral overreach in using executive orders for installation of the interim CA and acting corporation council without council or public review, discussion, and decision-making, including the executive order unilaterally installing Merritt as the interim CA position being signed by the mayor on November 8th, one day after the election. The legal department, the legal firm that shall not be named, and the mayor, and to some unknown degree, the committee, the corporation, the city administrator and interim city administration, again began making agreements behind closed doors for council to ratify an after-the-fact ratification. Someone in the law firm that shall not be named realizes again, there should at least be a sham attempt at public disclosure and decision-making through ratification by the council. Ratification is when the decision's already been made and implemented without compliance with council authority, open meeting law, Iowa Code Chapter 21, and public involvement and disclosure. Again, using executive sessions to try to force council members to not publicly disclose actions discussed and taken in executive session, when those actions and discussions should be disclosed under Iowa open meeting law, despite what you just said. For an executive session relating to personnel actions, the following four criteria must occur. The decision must involve an evaluation of the professional competency of an individual. The discussion must involve consideration of the appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge of the individual. The discussion must be such that if conducted during an open meeting, it would cause needless and irreparable injury to the person's reputation and a individual must request. All four of those, I see nothing in the information provided in the background for these two items that related to needless and irreparable injury to that person's reputation. On what grounds would there need to be a closed session regarding a known entity such as Merritt? Why were executive sessions held three months after the unilateral executive order? Council has the authority to vote to not enter into executive session when asked by a vote of one-third of the council, and I encourage you to use that authority if you feel that it is inappropriate for the discussion that's going to be happening, for it to happen in closed, closed discussion. Why was the RFP for the search company issued on February 12th, knowing before the election in October 23 that Spiegel was being paid with a contracting date of the search company April 24th, 2024, inherently guaranteeing that Merritt will be paid the $5,000 a month starting on April 30th for an unknown and long period of time per the amendment that they're asking you to approve? I was still on council November 8th, 23, and I knew nothing about the November 8th agreement that Alderman Jobgin, Gripp, Dunn, J.J. Condon, Mayor Protown, McGinnis affirmed, as it says, along with the former Guy Corporation Council and Mayor Mattson, which is not even a majority of the council. Did these aldermen realize their signatures were attached to a document that was developed in violation of Iowa Open Meeting Law Section 21 and strong council, weak mayor form of government for Davenport, undermining the authority and cohesiveness of council and putting their professional and legal integrity at risk? In conclusion, it appears the city's managed by a mayor, way overreaching his authority and knowingly doing it in the dark, out of the public eye, a legal department that is rude to council and constantly practices dereliction of duty, as evidenced by the unprofessional outburst and refusal to provide legal advice when requested by the alderman at large last week by the current guy in that chair, a law firm that is not to be named, that is taking action behind closed doors and providing too much after-the-fact advice, including advising that the former guy in that chair clean out his desk and leave weeks before retirement, and that council makes sham decisions to cover the city's violations and lack of good faith, using the council old guard, who are known to be predictable supporters of whatever the mayor, legal department, and staff want to do, which works to keep the rest of the council and the public in the dark, expecting council to cover for inappropriate and probably illegal violations of State Code 21 through silence and after-the-fact ratification. What's it going to take to get this city back working together openly into its proper authorities, as was council as the governing body of this city, with staff and mayor serving in their appropriate roles in order to be a functioning and open, transparent government of the people, by the people, for the people?
Thank you, Miss Lee. I would ask anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please step up to the podium, state your name and your either address or ward.
Gary Johansson, first ward. It came to my attention that $50,000 award was going to be given to individuals. It came to $100,000 that y'all are gonna give out. I think it's inappropriate at this time when we're being audited by the state for misappropriation, possible misappropriation of funds. It's disturbing. I'd rather be home reading a book than being down here. I'm reading this too often. I, I wish that everybody would decide to do their proper job. I don't know if the tail's wagging the dog hair or the dog is wagging the tail, and I don't know if you know what that means, but I don't know if the city administration is telling you what to do. We didn't vote them in. We voted you all in to represent us. You don't get paid as much as they do. From what I've seen from the Quadsity Times, they get outrageous salaries for what they do as assistant city administrators. We had two before the city administrator left. So I think there's significant or sufficient people to do the job. They don't need a bonus of $50,000. I am from the first ward, blue collar, west end of town. $50,000 would take care of a whole year for a four-people family to six-people family. To me, that's a lot of money, but to somebody that's making already $250,000 a year, I think it's outrageous. And I, I really believe that the city should stop expending these funds until the state auditor is done, finding out what, what has been done with the rest of it, money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Gary Eklund. I live in Mr. Kelly's ward. I only heard this yesterday and wasn't really planning on speaking, and I'm not really sure anymore which, there's two assistant administrators, and one of them I know was previously a human resources director, and I know one of them either currently or does supervise the neighborhood department. And I'm not sure whether that's her or not, but even if it's not, I'm opposed to her being ratified, even more so if she was the human resources director, because I believe the current human resources director should be fired immediately. And the racial demographics in the city of Davenport are essentially, the city of Davenport is essentially 50% white, 50% black, dark-skinned Hispanic, Asian, mixed race, and a couple of Native Americans who the legal department hasn't deported yet. You have heard me talk about the destruction of my blueberries and, and also my milkweed. And one of the things I know I haven't talked about-
Mr. Eklund, do you please stick to the agenda item?
Well, I would like to know what role this woman played in a three-year-long campaign against me that began Easter Sunday, a couple days after Easter Sunday in 2021. The city of Davenport-
Mr. Eklund, please stick, please stick to the agenda item, which is the ratification of an executive order, the ratification of a personal memorandum-
But, but it's, it's the agreement to put in place, in permanent place, a woman whose job qualifications I'm calling into question based upon the city's performance under her review. She had a supervisory responsibility for city employees, and city employees-
We have to take a vote?
I'm calling a point of order. The, the person who's-
About whose agreement is being discussed has nothing to do with the, this gentleman's concern. I understand he has long-term concerns about what happened, but this, he's misidentifying the person who, this person had no responsibility in that area, so.
I am not sure of that. I haven't had time to ask whether she was human resources director or whether she was the supervisor of the neighborhood department. I believe the supervisor of the neighborhood department is clearly not, but I also believe that all of the people at the top of the city government are implicated. I would like to know, Latrice Lacy just came up here. I don't know who ordered the action against her regarding stuff to do in her yard. I believe it might very well have been from somebody who targeted her, and I think that-
Gary. Okay.
Yeah. We, I, I apologize that I only heard about this yesterday and I didn't have more time, but I, I, I have to say, I don't know who helped the mayor plan that committee to investigate the investigation that apparently they are hiding the, the report from. I talked to the, I talked to the alderman who was here before, who's not here anymore.
Stick to the agenda item, Mr. Eklund. I'm more than happy to meet with you after the meeting if there's other things that you would like to talk about.
Well, no, but I, I, these people have professional responsibility. When, when they had the email situation last year where they said, "We're gonna send emails to the seven people who are on our partisan political divide side, and we're not gonna send emails."
Gary. I, I will meet with you, and Alderman Newton is offering, so we can all sit down with-
But this is not a personal thing with me right now.
I understand that, I understand that.
This is, this is if, if-
The issue at hand right now is the $50,000.
Well, and the ratification of permanent status. And, and if she was involved in the decision not to send emails to three aldermen, then she shouldn't be involved because these staff, the, 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 the legal staff is not supposed to represent seven out of 10 council people. The legal staff is supposed to represent 10. If they send an email saying, "We've got a proposal for the baseball stadium," it should go to all 10 people, not the seven people who they consider to be their soulmates.
I'm gonna ask you to sit down and-
I will, I will sit down. I'm 100% opposed to this.
I'm going to ask you to sit down and please take advantage of the offers of these aldermen to meet with you. Thank you, sir. Please sit down.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Please state your name and your either address or ward.
My name's Ann Crowder. I'm in the fifth district. Tim Kelly. Every time I read the newspaper, I roll my eyes, and I'm sure we all have been in that position where we roll our eyes with everything that's going on. At this point, I'm totally in agreement that $50,000 bonus, and I'm sure she is more than qualified. I read her background, she went to Auburn, she's well-qualified. However, how do you do two jobs? How can you be the CFO and also a city manager? How can you handle both jobs when one requires everything of your time? And then we're asking someone to do two jobs and then give them a raise to probably not be able to do either job effectively? Who came up with this? I don't understand. And the other thing is, how long have we been now looking for a new city administrator or city manager? How long have we been looking? Where are we on the search? At this time, are we gonna find someone more qualified than we had before? And those are the questions that I think all of the citizens of Davenport are looking for the answer. But please, I beg of all of you, all of you, do your homework. Look for a professional city manager, especially after what we've been through and what we're gonna go forward with, who has the qualifications and the experience to do the job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please step forward and again, name, city, and or ward.
Joe Fagin, third ward. My concerns, a lot of them have been expressed already, but one of the big concerns has to do with the office of city administrator. And the person that, the executive order was made, which there was a whole lot of executive orders made in 2023, prior years, there was not that many executive orders. So one does have to question these executive orders that were done behind closed doors that are now only coming to light months later. But when you look at the org chart of the city of Davenport, believe it or not, the residents are on top. We, the people. Then you all are the exact same line of the attorney and the city administrator, equal on the same level. I think there's a conflict of interest when you've got the mayor spending time in a closed-door session with a city administrator agreeing with the city attorney that this is a $50,000, which doesn't have to go through quite the scrutiny of $50,001. The office is responsible for public works. That office is responsible for sanitation. That office is responsible, everybody literally reports to that office, which means somebody in that office had to walk in and say, "324 Main Street. Look at 324 Main Street. Look at 324 Main Street. Look at 324 Main Street." And it fell on deaf ears. Cory Spiegel walked away with $1.6 million for having deaf ears. And if her people, her managers, didn't bring it to her attention, then that needs to be addressed. If she's HR, she shouldn't be lateral to some of the people in this city. The setup is messed up. Setup has been messed up. Maybe if it's a performance-based $50,000 and we can see the performance, but right now, what I know is she was in that office when that building fell. City clerk was let go, building official resigned, but as far as I know, that's it. What about their managers? What about the people they report to? We gonna pay off everybody? Common sense. We need some common sense in City Hall. Feels like everybody wants to sweep everything under the rug. I say it's time to clean house and use the broom to clean City Hall. Yeah. Industrial-sized broom. So needless to say, I object to just writing another check for $50,000 to someone in city administration because city administration has let down the people of Davenport, the residents of 324 Main Street.
State your name and address or ward, ma'am.
Rose, Rose in West Side. I come here tonight to say her story. Her story does not qualify her for $50,000. His story don't qualify him for $50,000. You all were voted by the people of Davenport- You all were voted by the people of Davenport to sit in these seats. You all need to do the right thing instead of letting a small man like the mayor, who is very small in stature outside of here, coerce you into giving her and him, I'd give them $0.50 because that's what they worth. Okay, I'm going to just say it. I want y'all to vote no against paying them who are not worth it $50,000. You didn't even pay the poor woman who got her leg cut off over at 324 Main $50, and you're talking about giving them something? They're rude. They're racist. They just want money, and they don't even need it. Give the people that needed the money, not them. Okay? And quit women, this is Women's History Month. I'm going to say it to all the women who I feel are women up here. Quit letting these men bully y'all because they nobody. Nobody. The mayor is nobody. Get him at home behind closed doors. I bet you he cry every night like a baby. He's small in stature. Don't be bullied. Don't be bullied by the mayor, the real women up here because one of them act like a man. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Cassandra, fourth ward. I just wanted to make a clear contrast. $50,000 would provide temporary supportive housing or permanent supportive housing for one person for almost four years. $50,000 would provide, well, it's over double the average city income here. So I just wanted to make very clear that what we're funding is what we're prioritizing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Cody Elif, and I have worked at the city hall for almost a decade and have held multiple positions at a time without additional compensation for that. I am doing the jobs currently of housing analyst, housing programs manager, and assistant director of our department. I'm expected by the finance department and the city administration to do this without compensation for the three jobs. And I do it because the work needs to get done. It is what it is. I'm not seeing why you wouldn't hold the employees that you oversee to the same standards and expectations. They are allowed to get bonuses while we struggle to staff our office and process complaints from the residents of Davenport. This is also an equal pay issue of discrimination, and it's unacceptable.
Good job.
Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this item?
David Anderson, Ward five, ordering Ward three. I would like to address and recognize the official city agenda online that anybody can access with computer and internet and was required by government court proceedings to include all of the data under the agenda hypertext. This is a hypertext. You just hit it. Under finance, number one, I have printed this out. Out as I present here, it is possible, I'm not a genius, as you can see. I've just got a little bit of experience and I kind of do my homework. So I just wanted others to see so that it could be used in future lawsuits and discussions. And I would also that this could be officially addressed by issues, by text. I'm sorry, but I find that the best procedure. I would also like for this to be considered. And I'm horrible at financing, so I could have got this wrong. The city is not paying Cory Spiegel or $167,000 a year or so. And instead, they're paying a $50,000 bonus. And that might be cheap. And I personally attended one of her meetings and for the whole entire time, she was absolutely spot-on, perfect, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name and either ward or address.
Derek Cornet, seventh ward. How's everybody doing tonight? Going to restate some of the things that the other people have already stated. Strong counsel, weak mayor. You can fire these people. Okay? You can fire them. It just takes a vote from you guys. If they're not doing their jobs, you can fire them. Yeah. I wouldn't support this $50,000 for either one of them right now, especially not the number-two item because outside counsel does all the work for them. But I think we need to sit back and see what the bond ratings do this year. So far, since the bond rating was done last time, we've had a building collapse, multimillion-dollar lawsuits pending. Probably two-thirds of the senior staff administration has fled ship. And every day, there's a new conspiracy going on with the mayor and his good old boys group. You know? What are they going to, I mean, what are they going to say when they come in there and look at the bond rating? Davenport's a mess. You know? We shouldn't get a good rating this year. Why? Hell, the mayor and four of the people on the council may be forced to resign for illegal actions. And they deserve to be forced to resign. Yeah, they do. Because you did it. You did it behind closed doors, and you knew it. And you listened to those idiots over here tell you. Yeah, point of order, come on, say it. You know? You got to sit down and think about this stuff. You guys, the council people, sit and think about this stuff. You don't have to go into a closed session tonight. You don't have to vote on this to ratify this stuff. You know? Just say, vote tonight and say, "We don't want a closed session." And then you won't have one. And don't ratify the $50,000. You know, I mean, hey, I'd wait and see what the, how the city's going to do on their bond issues this year before I'd give finance $50,000.
Thank you. Please state your name and address or ward.
I'm on the 17th ward. I honestly feel bad for some of you new people sitting up here, have to listen to this mess. It has to be kind of scary. You only been here in your seats for a couple of months. And it's so convenient that Mayor Madison is not here. I don't know where he is. I don't know if he's sick. Please God, don't let him be sick. If that's not the way, I feel bad for him. But it's convenient that he's not here to point of order and you know how he nods his head at people and, you know, throws his signal. So I don't know, he'd be holding some of y'all hand. But I would like to say, piggyback off what he said. 2023, Davenport got a big old fat F. Fat F, failed. So nobody should be getting a raise. If I, I work. And if I don't do my job appropriately, I don't get no bonus. I don't get no raise. I don't get an extra quarter, an extra dollar, nothing. Okay? So the same thing applies here. A bad year. No bonuses, no raises, not nothing. Maybe next year. That's what they tell us regular people. The same applies to y'all.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Is there anyone from council wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Lynch.
Thank you. I just, Mr. Hire, can you clarify, please? We are not allowed to speak on this item, though. Is that correct?
Well, all I can say to that is, not knowing what you intend to say, you need to be very cautious because the employees involved have not waived their rights. It's an employment issue.
Thank you. This is quite the predicament we're in. I feel like we've heard a lot of information that I think some of us didn't know from our constituents. I personally don't know what's true and what's not. So I do want to clarify that, and thank you for your feedback. And I guess I just really want to say, please rest assured that we did not run for office to be bullied or told what to do. We are strong-minded people and we're independent thinkers. So please understand that and bear with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you for my chance to speak again. So I'm going to run that back. Bullying, bullying, bullying. I know what to say and I know what's not to say. I'm happy that I wasn't involved. How about them apples?
Is there anyone else from council wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item. I will recommend that items one and two, however, go on for discussion to allow the council time to understand these items and possibly make statement next week. Item number two, it's a resolution ratifying Executive Order 2404, appointing Brian Hire as interim corporate counsel and approving the personnel memorandum of understanding between the city of Davenport and Brian Hire and memorizing Mr. Hire's appointment as interim corporate counsel. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Please step forward, state your name, and either address or ward.
James Woods, eighth ward. First of all, I would like, as the citizens of Davenport, I'd like to apologize to you, Ms. Newton, because you were treated with total disrespect last week, and I was not here to be able to say anything. Second of all is, when does the money stop? You know, we sat, a lot of us sat in an election thing saying that all the money's counted for, all the money's counted for. We pulled $4 million out. He told us $3 million. It was actually $4 million for 324. We pulled 1.6 million out. And to answer Latrice's question, that's where it stops, 1.6 million. When does the money stop? You guys are all pretty tech-savvy. I suggest you guys look on your phones tonight, when you have some free time, look up the city of Dalton, Illinois. It's 124 miles away, and guess what? It's really close to us. Money getting spent like no other. Council's getting cut out of stuff. Feds are in there investigating, state auditor's in there investigating. The auditor is not only here for the three payouts because I was the one that helped collect 292 signatures, only 100 were needed. And he's going to investigate the money at 324, too. So until those investigations are done, I suggest we close the checkbook and only do only mandatory things. Nothing extra, nothing, nothing more. Because we were told in October that our tax money is tapped out. All it goes, it goes to all the departments, and there's no extra money. But we pulled $6 million out of our butts. This ain't DC. We don't just print them. So where's it coming from? Maybe the slush funds that were mentioned in the budget meeting? I don't know. Do the right thing.
Thank you. Anyone else? And even if you spoke before, can you please still state your name and either address or ward?
Hi, my name is David Ezra Sidran. I live in the third ward. This is now the third attempt to give Mr. Hire a $50,000 bonus. The first try was with the mayor's executive order. In a weak mayor, strong counsel, former government, such as the city of Davenport has, the mayor does not have the authority to do this. The legal term is ultra viras. It means, quote, "acting or done beyond one's legal power or authority." The mayor of Davenport does not have the power to give out bonuses with an executive order. Apparently, outside counsel told the city this wasn't going to fly. Why didn't the city's own legal department warn the mayor first? Then the city tried to do a closed session end around. Again, outside counsel told the city this wasn't legal. Why didn't the city's own legal department tell the mayor? Now the council is being asked to approve a resolution to award another $50,000 bonus. Before you give away more city money, let's take a look at the actions of the city's legal department over the last few months. Because of how the city's legal department handled the $1.6 million payoff to the previous city administrator, the city is being investigated by the state auditor. And it's being sued. The city's legal department did not inform the mayor that his actions were ultra viras or way beyond his legal authority. The city's legal department did not inform the city that their closed sessions did not meet the legal requirements. In all of these situations, outside counsel, we know who they are. We can't say the firm's name. We know what they charge, and they're charging the city a lot. Had to inform the city that their actions were not legal. And then the city's legal department, in conjunction with the outside counsel, decided to sue me. Because, and I'm quoting from the city's own press release here, "I simply, quote, requested copies of the records in question." Let that sink in. I filed a FOIA and got sued. The city of Davenport is suing a citizen simply for requesting a public document. Do the city council vote on this? Aren't you guys supposed to vote on this when you sue people? Or do they just run on their own? I guess they make their own decisions. You guys are superfluous now. Finally, I'd like to remind the city council of Mr. Hire's response to Alderwoman Newton's concerns that the city might be in violation of policy pertaining to public comment at city council meetings. Mr. Hire responded, and this is an exact quote, quote, "This is not a topic appropriate for discussion on the floor of the city council meeting out of respect to the mayor. The city council and my responsibility to the city of Davenport, as your attorney, for the time being, I'm not going to engage you in this conversation." Close quote. Whoa. I am asking the city council not to reward Mr. Hire with a $50,000 bonus. I ask the city council to vote against this absurd payoff. I'm asking the city council to please do your job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jo Fagin, third ward. I got ahold of, after last week's meeting, from the alderman to my left, Resolution 2015-156. Committee Finance Department, Legal. And basically, these were the council rules saying that five minutes is what people can talk. This is what was advised to not speak out loud last week. Rule nine, customary order of business. Thirteen, public with business to present to the council. Any person may address the council for no more than five minutes to discuss business relative to the city of Davenport. The following is customary order of business at the committee of the whole. Number 10, public with business. Any person with, may address the council for no more than five minutes to discuss business with the city of Davenport. Rule 12, under duties and privileges of the mayor, the mayor shall preserve order into quorum and shall decide all questions of order.
I think I heard a point of order regarding relevance to the item, ma'am.
That this is advice from this attorney that, again, behind closed door and executive session, that actually goes completely against the resolution 2015-156 from the legal department. So if anybody should be aware of what the rules are, it is the legal department. These rules. I also want to read a quote from this person that after the collapse of the 324 building and his. of the 324 building, and his statement was that "there are two ways to do thing and no law on which way is the correct way," Hire said, adding that "bringing the agreements into public session was just to dot all the i's." So in other words, it's absolutely okay to do everything behind closed doors. We only bring it up front when we get caught, because we can't sweep it under the rug. This is your legal advice moving forward? I don't trust this legal counsel. I heard tonight someone say you have the ability and you have the right and the authority to fire legal counsel. Not only do I not want you to give a bonus of $50,000, I'm asking that you fire legal counsel. It is only because of outside counsel that they advise the council about the $1.6 million payout. And only probably because of legal counsel do we know that this $50,000 is on these now. My suggestion, when you close the doors, have a legal discussion, leave one out. He's not working for the city, he's not working for the residents. His job performance is showing that. If you can't see it, I'm not blind. Blind man can see it.
Anyone else? Please state your name and either address or ward.
Kelly Sidran, 1502 Clay Street, 3rd Ward. When one is diagnosed with lung cancer, one does not reward the lung cancer with a cigarette. When one is diagnosed with diabetes, we do not reward the diabetes with a Mountain Dew. The city has a cancer. The only way you get rid of cancer is to cut it all out, all of it. You don't reward the cancer, you get rid of it. You guys are fully capable of doing this job, and I have faith. And I will tell you one thing, Ms. Lynch. My husband's moral compass always points straight north, always. I can assure you of that. You have an obligation to cure the city's cancer.
Anyone else?
Rosa Westside. I'm gonna, I don't want you to take offense when I say that you guys are being bullied, okay? But what I see here, I see the men of small stature bullying you guys, and I don't want you to go behind a closed-door session to vote for him to get $50,000 because you're afraid of how maybe one of your constituents up here would think, one of your workers. Because I didn't do it, they don't like me, who cares? Okay? That's what I mean about being bullied. When you ran for office, every last one of you, everybody asked for our vote. Like us, we're gonna do a good job. The good job is to do what the voters want. And we no longer want to fund him or her. We tired of them. It's time for them to go. They were a big party and they know all what happened. But now we go reward them $50,000 because they sitting ugly selves over there? An interim? No, I know what you gonna say, I know what you gonna say, I said it already.
Let's be res-
I said it already, I said it already, I ain't taking it back. But anyway, what I saw him do to you last week was very disrespectful. And you bagged up, and I know you ain't afraid of nobody, I know that. What I saw you bag up, that just, that got me nervous because women, we run the world. We run the world. These men are just here to be sitting here because they ain't got nothing else to do. But we cannot go behind this closed session with this woman that's sitting here tonight and calling herself running the show. And vote yes, vote no. They don't deserve nothing. They probably got more money in their bank account than what they could spend before they die. Okay? Vote no. I don't, with all due respect, and stop letting them talk to y'all like that. Thank you. You a lawyer, you are-
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, please state your name and either address or ward.
Judith Lee, 2nd Ward. My previous statement regarding Miss Merritt stands for this item on the agenda as well. Regarding mayoral overreach, my belief that Section 21 of Iowa code relating to open meeting law has again been violated using the same process as was used for the previous payouts. Counsel's been manipulated and suppressed, and the legal department supporting and the law firm that shall not be named misusing the law and counsel authorities and use of executive sessions to keep public business from public view. In addition, I make the following comments regarding Mr. Hire and these agreements. The mayor again overreached his authority in appointing him by executive order to this position without counsel involvement, discussion, review, and decision-making. He did it on January 2nd, your first day of 50% of the council. It's clear that Mr. Hire has no respect for counsel authority as a whole and for individual council members because he's, and is readily open to dereliction of his duty because he would not answer a valid question asked by the finance chair. And he did it in a bullying and disrespectful manner. He's also sent me emails while I was on council and off that were rude, aggressive, and bullying. And I have copies if you want to see them. I ask why the city entered into a voluntary separation agreement with Mr. Hire and Mr. Warner, August 2022, that identified his resignation, not retirement date, as effective February 2, 2nd, 2024, as initialed by both Mr. Hire and Ms. Fleming, without notification or involvement of the council? I was on council at the time and I knew nothing about this agreement. And there's agreement for each of those. What does Clause 6 in that voluntary separation agreement entitled "release" mean? Says, "The parties agree to mutually release, acquit, and forever discharge the other party from any and all liability whatsoever, including all claims, demands, and causes of action of every nature affecting either party. The parties further agree not to sue or otherwise institute any legal proceeding of any nature against the other party, with the exception of litigation to enforce this agreement. The parties agree this agreement is not an admission by the city or any other person of any acts that might be considered a violation of federal, state, or local law." That sounds to me like we're doing a, "you are released from all possible problems forever." That's what I'm hearing. Why was a release entered into a year and a half prior and not rescinded by these current agreements? What is going on with the legal department with this release? I have no idea. So I repeat, oh, by the way, the question about when the search is going to start, the contract is supposed to be issued on April 24th, 2024, which is three days before her $5,000 a month starts. That's why I said it's inherent to her agreement that she will get $5,000 extra a month. I repeat, what is it going to take to get the city council back working together openly in its proper authorities as the governing body of the city with staff and mayor serving in their appropriate roles in order to be a function, functioning, open, transparent government of the people, by the people, and for the people? At what point does Davenport no longer be a third-world autocratic government that knowingly tampers with election, publicly bullies and openly suppresses individual council members as well as council as a whole? Openly violates open meeting laws to the extent that the state legislature steps in and changes laws to make it more expensive with fines for when you knowingly violate laws, which is what the city has been doing? And also unilaterally suppressing constituents' First Amendment rights to actively seek redress of grievances? At what point does Davenport- So with that, I ask to close. I encourage you all to vote no on ratification. Don't step into that legal cesspool that they have created for you. Vote no on ratification. These are previously made decisions. Vote no on the amendment until this can be openly discussed and looked at as it should be according to the purposes of executive sessions, which this does not meet afore. And say no to going into executive session tonight. And we need three to stop it.
Anyone else? Please step forward and state your name, address, or ward.
Latrice Lacy, the 5th Ward. I would encourage you to vote no on this. You all have someone serving as legal counsel who has repeatedly shown that either they don't know the law or they don't care about the law. The way that he spoke to Alderwoman Newton last week was ridiculous, it was disrespectful. It was condescending, it was rude. And that has been allowed to go on for years and no one does anything about it. It was completely inappropriate, it was a dereliction of duty, telling you he's not gonna do his job. This isn't the appropriate place to discuss it. This is the appropriate place to discuss it. It's a public meeting. You're asking a question about something about the agenda for the public meeting. Where else do you ask it? At the corner store, at the liquor store? This is the place. But you're told, "I'm not gonna answer that." And you're supposed to take that and walk away with it. The behavior of the legal department of the City of Davenport, I would characterize it as like the mafia. If they could get away with killing us, they would. I have had to file an EOC complaint because of the behavior of those two sitting there, which I don't know if you all know about it. But how many other complaints have they caused? When I was, with it, my first interactions were serving on the Civil Service Commission, where your legal counsel leaned over the table and got in the face of the Chair of the Civil Service Commission, yelling at her, talking to her incredibly aggressively. I've been retaliated against ever since that. I was told, "I'm not invited to department head meetings because I participated in the investigation before EOC." How many people have you all paid out because of their behavior? I mean, what did the fire chief get? Five, six, $700,000? Who knows, because it was never made public? How much money is gonna be paid out behind stuff that they do? That they do wrong, that they do illegally, that they are knowingly doing wrong? If you all ratify this, you are cosigning this illegal behavior, this inappropriate behavior. When is enough enough? How much stuff are they gonna be able to get away with? And why are they dragging the new people into whatever this is? You all had no knowledge of it. You joined the council, you get sworn in, it's like, oh, surprise. I did this thing that I wasn't supposed to be doing. Can you sign off on it now to say it's okay? I would tell them to keep it away from me, I don't wanna touch it with a 10-foot pole. If we have money to hand out like this, why can't we give those people who were killed? Why aren't they, why are they not getting settlements? Those people from 324 Main? Why couldn't we figure out housing for those people who lost everything? Because the city wanted to rush in and demolish the building with all of their belongings inside? We don't have money for any of the stuff that matters. We had somebody here last week talking about how they were unhoused, living in a hotel with their kids, they could lose custody of their children. But we don't have anything set up to help these people, but we can hand out $50,000 bonuses to staff members who tell council members that they're not gonna answer their questions because they don't want to do their job? The same staff flat-out declined to take action that the commission referred to them because they said, "We don't want to." What job do you have that you can decide that you're just not gonna perform portions of it and your bosses don't say anything? Well, not only not say anything, they don't give you a $50,000 bonus. I have to serve as a department director, I have to serve as the litigator for our department, I have to serve as HR for our department, I have to serve as IT for our department, I have to serve as finance for our department. And then I actually have to do my actual job. And nobody cares that I have to do all this stuff and I'm the lowest-paid director. Some of these people have bachelor's degrees, I'm a lawyer. At what point is enough enough? At what point is somebody gonna say, "This is inappropriate? These are equal pay violations, this is..." I mean, it's just, it looks terrible. You're being investigated right now for some stuff that they cooked up in a back room. And then they're coming forward with another thing that they have cooked up in a back room, and now that they've been caught and know that the auditor's on to them, oh, well, we need to bring it forward in a public meeting now. You can't do handshake deals in back rooms with public funds. You can't. It's illegal. And there's a reason that it's illegal, because these are public funds. You're spending public money, you have to do it publicly. You can't go back behind closed doors and hide, "Oh, it's a personnel agreement, it's a personnel issue." You can't go and vote in closed session, give somebody a performance evaluation and give them a 10% raise, and then that never comes back to the floor, is never on an agenda, is never publicly voted on. That's illegal. And your legal counsel should be telling you that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bakanditsin, 7th Ward. I just wanna point this out. The community has been silenced in a way of taking us from five minutes to three minutes. There has been people on the city council who has been silenced. Are you next? Are you next? So I advise all of you to stand up for yourselves. As my sister says, chin up, chest up, ten toes down. Because you're all on the line. Do the right thing. At any day, when you, when they put your name on them court documents, it's only you and your pocketbook. They ain't gonna pay. They're not gonna cover you when your name is on that paper. So I advise you to do your own work. Are you the next one to be silenced?
Anyone else?
Gary Eckland, and both good and bad, in a sense. With this gentleman, I have several years of personal face-to-face experience in dealing with. So everything that I am saying right now is firsthand, no guesses. And I should also say, I've been mentioned before that I've been teetering on the edge of homeless since physical attacks on my property intended to destroy me. And I have had difficulty filing my complaints. The way that housing and urban, the way that civil rights complaints that go, if you file a complaint against the city housing department and the legal department and the administration and the mayor, it goes to the Department of Housing and Urban Development in Kansas City to have civil rights investigators. If you allege that a police officer engaged in illegal conduct of a white supremacist or racial and ethnic hatred-based crime, that apparently goes to the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, and they would have already been investigated on my behalf by now, but because trying not to be homeless has been number one. But you will be facing, and thanks to that lawyer, Department of Housing and Urban Development Investigations and Iowa Civil Rights Investigations. And I am asking, one of the key things in civil rights investigations is you're not supposed to retaliate. When the city staff showed up at my yard in 2021, they said if I complained that my rights were violated, the city would retaliate with a vengeance. The code enforcement officer said that the head of the code enforcement department, the neighborhood department-
Mr. Eckland, please stick to the, to the agenda items specifically, please.
I specifically, I specifically met with that lawyer in 2021, and I gave him paperwork. I met with him in 2021, probably 2022. I know I met with him in 2023, in May or maybe April even of 2023, before the collapse of 324 Main Street. I handed him a thick packet of written documents alleging on-the-job white supremacist activity by a code enforcement officer in the City of Davenport, who is himself a landlord, who said landlords are superior and all the black tenants in the City of Iowa or the City of Davenport are inferior. This code enforcement officer could have been fired if he had investigated him in 2021 and behaved appropriately, could have been terminated for cause, they could have retrained everybody in code enforcement that you can't. It's, this man said to me, "The job of the city is to come down hard on the lowlifes on behalf of the higher-class citizens." That was reported to him in writing. And I think he had a legal obligation to investigate my charges. You're doing a report of order, I know you guys like to filibuster me. On June 1st, there are two, there's, what I allege is a three-year-long campaign of trespassing, stalking, harassment, destruction of property, two specific incidents where they destroyed my-
Point of order.
You're taking my time, that's abusive, that's bullying. You're bullying me.
Point of order, please. Mr. Eckland, please.
We were talking about an agreement. Thank you.
Please stick to the agenda item.
Under his, under his personal supervision, my Native American artwork was destroyed. On the day that they destroyed the manger, on the day that they destroyed my manger on July 7th, or July 6th of last year, I talked to him by telephone in the morning and I said they are illegally destroying my property. City staff on that day, under the direct supervision of the code enforcement supervisor and parking lot supervisor, who I have appointed- and parking lot supervisor, who I have a photograph of her giving me the finger after she tore my plants out of the garden as she's cussing at me, and then she covered, she covered her finger like that right as I took the photograph. She directed staff with his permission to remove my laundry from the clotheslines. They took down my clotheslines. That police officer, a police, a police officer, said that the, the police chief had a right to hang pants.
This is, this is-
This is his qualification.
I, I would ask that, I am, I am, I'm calling a point of order because this, this is an employment agreement, and I am asking the gentleman to speak to the agreement.
I have not been able to file it yet, but I am filing a complaint to have him disbarred. I have asked the federal government to come in here and, and to pursue federal felony hate crime prosecution of that lawyer. I am asking the United States Department of Justice Color of Authority Division to prosecute that man for hate crimes, namely the destruction of my property.
Mr. Eckland, please, if it's not the agenda item.
It is the agenda item, he's the agenda, his behavior is the agenda, his legal opinion, his legal opinion is that it was okay for them to destroy my blueberries. His legal opinion is that blueberries are legal at the Green Thumb Garden Center, but when I buy them and I buy an expensive flower pot and I bring them to my house, they're illegal.
Mr. Eckland.
I'll sit down, but he's a criminal, and I hope he's going to prove-
Please sit down. Anyone else? Please state your name, sir, and either your city or ward.
David Anderson, Ward 5, right across the street from Ward 3, and I'm very proud of it. Just to piggyback on that, deadened forehead, brain damage by Rock Island County Jail correctional officers. I never wanted to talk about it, but after listening to that, please, there is, you know, a point of order that has to be someday, a line drawn. Now to the issue, I also would like to point out the online agenda. Number two, under finance, it can, can be hypertexted. I would like people to get all the information on the accompanying pages also online, I printed them all out, I would like them to study it, and I would like them to hopefully use this information and also others to discuss issues with facts and verifications and other things. I would like to give this packet, it does not have to be added into the agenda minutes or anything, but I would like to offer that to anybody that would like it, because I did do a lot of research, and hopefully the highlights and everything would point to everything that I said to today, so hopefully I won't have to talk ever again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please state.
My name is Mary Johansson, and I'm in the 1st Ward. For 44 years, I've owned my home, it's paid for, I've paid taxes, I support this community, I support the voting, I vote all the time. Now here, I find a lot of issues about Brian Hire, which is disheartening. If his representation is that bad, then I don't understand why we're rewarding him with a $50,000 bonus. I, I, I think neither of these two bonuses should be awarded until the state auditor is done finding out where the other money went and why it went. Some people were here when the city administrator was being harassed. I assume that they knew they were being harassed. I don't understand why the other assistant city administrators weren't harassed, but for some reason two were not. This is, this is not city government, this is not what we elected you to do to represent us for. If you're being railroaded, and it certainly sounds like it, I'm sorry, you all need to stop and wait till the state auditor is done with both the 324 Main Street investigation and the money that was removed or given for harassment of I don't know what kind. But I'm disappointed to hear this, I'm disappointed that I don't understand who runs this city, and that's disheartening. I've been here most of my life, so I wish somebody would stand up, tell the truth, do the right thing for the rest of us, the people that pay the bills, the people that pay the money that allows you to make choices to run the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone from counsel wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one from counsel, move on to item number three. This is a resolution adopting the updated investment policy. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Anyone from counsel? Seeing no one, we will move on to item number four. Item four, resolution establishing the date and times for the annual Halloween parade and trick-or-treating, as Sunday, October 27th, 2024, at 2:00 p.m., and Thursday, October 31st, 2024, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., respectively. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Is there anyone from counsel? Seeing none, we move on to item number five. Item number five is a motion directing the city administrator and related staff to implement an internal animal services unit and negotiate any related contracts or agreements. I will ask, take a point of privilege at this time and ask if our interim city administrator can provide an update related to this item.
Sure, thank you. This item is simply reappearing on the agenda due to mechanics. When an item is tabled, it has to reappear on the agenda within the term that it was tabled for and how that was specified. I will say that we have continued to have great dialogue with the Humane Society, we are very, very close on an updated contract and agreement with them. We are at the stage right now where both sides' attorneys are just fine-tuning language, and both of us agree that this will come before you for consideration on the next council cycle. So again, very, very close, I believe we're probably down to about a sentence or two.
The recommendation at this time that it be tabled again to allow for time to finalize the contract.
Just for one cycle, yes.
Thank you. That said, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Is there anyone from counsel? Oh, I see one, Alderman Jobden.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. If no one has any comments, then I will make that motion to table for one cycle, but I'll wait to see if there's any further comments from my colleagues.
I do not see any, anyone from counsel, so I have a motion?
Yep, so moved.
And second, all those in favor of tabling item five for one cycle, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, is it a roll call? Yeah, it's a table, sorry, we need a roll call, please.
Reinharts. McGuinness.
Yes.
Jobgen.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
R. Dunn.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
T. Dunn.
Yes.
Burkeholder.
Yes.
And Kelly.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. I would now ask that Vice Chair, Elderwoman Lynch, set the agenda for next week, please.
Thank you. I make a motion to move items number three and four to the consent agenda and placing items number one and two on the discussion agenda.
I have a motion and a second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now I yield the floor back to you, Madam Protem.
Thank you very much, Elderwoman Newton. The next thing, are any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions tonight? And any other reports of, of city officials? So the next item is, this is a motion to go into executive session to evaluate the performance of individuals in closed session as requested by those individuals pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5, 21.51i. So do I have that motion? There is no public with comment here. Okay, okay. So could I have a roll call, please?
McGuinness. Reinharts.
Yes.
Newton.
No.
Lynch.
No.
Kelly.
No.
Burkeholder.
No.
R. Dunn. Jobgen.
Yes.
And T. Dunn.
Yes, sir.
Five yeses and four noes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, a motion to adjourn, and a second has been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are-